Good morning, everyone. This meeting of the Baltimore City Council Health, Environment and Technology Committee is now called to order. I am Councilwoman Danielle McCray, representing the 2nd District and Chair of the committee. In attendance, we have Councilman John Bullock from the 9th District, Councilman Mark Conway from the 4th District, Councilman Ryan Dorsey from the 3rd District, Councilwoman Felicia Porter from the 10th District, Councilman James Torrance from the 7th District, Councilman Isaac Yitzhak Slifer from the 5th District, and also in attendance, we have Councilman Christopher Burnett from the 8th District. From the Mayor's Office, we have Nina Themelis and Sophia Gavernwatt. And from the Council President's Office, we have Nikki Thompson with us today. We are also joined by Matthew Peters, who is staff to the committee. Before we get started, as always, just a couple of ground rules. I'm just asking that you please stay muted until you are recognized by the Chair. Did you mute yourself when you are not speaking? That before you speak, you please identify yourself, the agency or organization that you are with, and your position. That you do speak slowly and clearly. And after you're finished speaking, please mute yourself again until you are recognized by the Chair. We are asking that all committee members and city agency officials, please keep your video on for the duration of the hearing unless there are technical difficulties preventing you from doing so. And last, for members of the public, there will be an opportunity for public testimony. You will have two minutes each for testimony. The committee is hearing two resolutions today. Resolution 21-0079R, informational hearing mold in housing, and Resolution 21-0064R, investigational hearing urban farming. We are going to start with Resolution 21-0079R for the purpose of inviting the Commissioner of the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Executive Director of the Housing Authority of Baltimore City, the Health Commissioner, and the Secretary of the Maryland Department of Health, or his designee, to appear before the City Council to discuss the potential dangers of mold in housing. For this hearing, we are going to start with brief opening remarks from the resolution sponsor. Then we will hear reports from the agents and give committee members the opportunity to ask questions. After that, we're going to go ahead and move on to public testimony. I want to start just by, thank you, Councilmember Burnett, for re-engaging the council regarding this critical matter. Mold in housing is a multifaceted issue that has touched many of our city residents, most notably our most vulnerable. And without immediate remediation, its presence can have a lifelong health impact, even for the most healthiest among us. Our children are more likely to develop asthma and spend more time in an emergency room and less time in the classroom. And we know that with climate change, we can expect more humid and wet conditions only exacerbate in this persistent issue. So it is imperative that we collaborate as a body with our city agencies to look at what we are currently doing and what we must implement in order to protect our city residents and eliminate this home-based health hazard. We're now going to hear from the resolution sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilmember Burnett.
Thank you, Chair McCray, and colleagues, and representatives of city agency and residents of public who are joining us today. So I'll be quick. We brought forth this investigational hearing because our office, like many of our colleagues, is working with a number of constituents who are dealing with the health consequences of overexposure to toxic mold. Oftentimes, we get a lot of calls and requests from renters who have chronically damp apartments due to unrepaired leaks from pipes and AC units, which leads to rapid growth of mold. We get calls from homeowners who've recently purchased a home only to find out that there are unsafe levels of mold, and housing advocates who battle with rent escrow cases. Mold grows in a house. When it grows in a house, it releases spores into the air that contain myotoxins. When indoor mold levels are high relative to outdoor levels or more harmful varieties of mold are present, allergies and other health issues can result. And a lot of our constituents experience symptoms like wheezing, coughing, sneezing, sore throat, nasal congestion, chest tightening, depression, chronic sinus infections, and oftentimes more, particularly for individuals who have chronic diseases or very serious allergies and immunosuppression, immune systems that are suppressed from other issues. And abating mold can be costly. We know that first and foremost, the issues causing dampness or growth of mold must be addressed prior to being able to treat the mold. And for renters, who, you know, this really came about, because we've been getting a ton of calls about this in a few multi-housing units in my district, they're at the mercy of their landlords to wait for repairs to be made. And when they request an assessment of mold, landlords have the ability to deny them that service. If a tenant files a rent escrow case in an attempt to abate the mold, the judge places the responsibility on the tenant to hire a mold specialist to prove the mold is present in the apartment. And for a lot of our families in Baltimore, they do not have the funds to hire a mold specialist. And for homeowners, they may not have the financial ability to address the costly structural causes of mold, which can be roof, a roof, damaged roof that needs replacement, water leaks from broken pipes. Or in one instance, I had a constituent reach out that was living next to a vacant property that had a hole in its roof and was causing water to encroach onto their property. And when I went inside, saw a wall of mold in a senior citizen's house, which I will note that the ACD snapped right in the game and helped me get that resolved. But nonetheless, there are a lot of people who are dealing with these issues. And we, as a city, must do more to protect residents in Baltimore City who are facing the negative health consequences due to the conditions in their homes. And so with that, Madam Chair, I'll hand it back to you to hear from our agencies on what we're doing about this very serious issue.
Thank you, Councilmen. Get my video back on. Thank you, Councilman Burnett. We are going to hear from our agency representatives at this time. Committee members, I just asked that you hold your questions until we have heard from all of the agencies. We're going to start with the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and members of the committee. I'm Alice Kennedy, Commissioner of the Department of Housing and Community Development. I am joined here today by Stephanie Murdock, our legislative liaison, as well as Deputy Commissioner Eric Booker, who oversees our Code Enforcement and Emergency Management Division. DHCD stands by our bill report in support of the council's efforts to learn more about our current strategies to address mold in housing. We do recognize the importance of creating healthy homes and a healthy home environment that curbs those environmental hazards, lowers asthma triggers, limits trips to the emergency room, reduces the number of school days missed or workdays missed, and also overall supports the health and well-being of occupants of housing, whether or not it be rental housing or ownership housing across the city. Mold, as we've heard as well already, you know, it's both a complicated issue. It exists naturally in all environments. There are no federal standards around some of the identifications and inspections. And, you know, we don't have any current threshold limit values or anything for airborne concentrations of mold or mold spores that have been set. We know that the state, our state legislators are currently working on a bill this session to look at developing regulations for mold standards statewide. Although mold is not currently a violation in our federal, state, and local codes, we do know, you know, from our work that we see with Baltimore's owner-occupied properties, our rental housing, that interior environmental quality is an important component of achieving those healthy homes. And interior mold spores can wreak havoc on a family's health and well-being, as well as the underlying causes of the mold can wreak havoc on the physical housing structure in, you know, additional damage outside of the mold and the health impacts associated with the mold spores themselves. DHCD's Code Enforcement Division, our inspectors enforce the city's housing, zoning, building, and fire-related codes through the issuance of notices and citations. As it relates to the complaints for the appearance of mold, you know, those might be things around water stains, staining, you know, the appearance of possible mold or mildew or other issues that might be visible on a wall, a ceiling, floor, cabinet. Inspectors will issue a violation notice to the property owner for sanitation violations, defective walls, you know. And if we can identify the source of the moisture, whether or not that be a leaking roof or leaking air conditioning condensation unit, pipes, et cetera, they'll also list that on the notice as well. We ourselves, housing code enforcement inspectors, we do not test mold. We are not certified in any way, shape, or form possible to even identify mold. You know, you can definitely look at something, and that could have an appearance of mold. But we've also, I know personally, in the work that I've done over the years, I've seen things that has an appearance of mold but ends up, once it has been tested, is mildew or is not a mold-related spore. So we do not test mold. We do not have any expertise in the identification of mold. And we advise that property owners or landlords hire a private mold investigator or environmental services firm to test and determine what, if any, type of mold is present and what, if any, remediation steps would be needed to remediate the conditions that are, you know, the mold that's present or any underlying conditions that may be causing the mold growth to start with. Our Division of Homeownership and Housing Preservation, we have a number of programs that can assist homeowners and eligible owners of occupied properties. We also have several programs that work with landlords as well related to repairs, which may address the underlying causes of mold, such as a roof leak, the plumbing leak, improper ventilation, you know, not having a vent fan in a bathroom or laundry area can be a cause. And, you know, we're able to assist through these programs, whether or not it be through loans or grants to both address the mold issue as well as any underlying issues as well. Our weatherization assistance program, you know, has a component that is around health and safety issues, such as mold and asbestos. And that not only improves energy efficiency, but we also are able to address some of those health hazards. One key area with weatherization assistance program that we see a lot is actually the installation of that bathroom ventilation fan that I mentioned earlier. Our lead hazard reduction program also can assist residents in under, addressing the root causes. If we go into a property and we see something that has the appearance of mold, we actually need to have that looked at before we can move forward with any lead hazard reduction work. And then our Office of Rehabilitation Services also can provide loans and grants as, you know, funding allows and eligibility for mold remediation and some of those underlying sources of mold growth. Our Light Intake and Assessment Unit manages that single application process for all of those programs. They, you know, can help manage the application process, provide additional connection to services, and then refers clients to those three programs that I just mentioned. You know, there are a couple of items that I did want to mention as well. Councilman Burnett also just mentioned, you know, during the time of a sale. So we, as Baltimore City DHCD, don't have any involvement around any inspections that are part of the sale of private property. The use in occupancy permit is something that's provided as part of a building inspection. When you have typically a vacant building that needs a full use in occupancy permit that inspects the work that has been done under those permits. A home inspection, or during the time of a real estate transaction, the buyers have the option on the home inspections addendum to initial next to choices that they have of what types of inspections that they want to undergo during the home inspection process that's governed by that real estate contract and by that addendum. So during that phase, a home buyer may check off that they want the regular home inspection, but then they'd also have to indicate that they want additional either mold inspections, sewer and water line inspections, roof inspections, things along those lines. So that's taken care of during that time of a home, during the time of a real estate transaction around that home inspection process. And the cost burden for those tests is on the buyer of the property. And then, you know, any remediation and so forth is a negotiation point as part of a contract of sale. So I just wanted to put that out there as a piece that we don't have a place in that process on a private real estate transaction. Otherwise, DHCD stands by our bill report in support of the resolution to discuss mold in housing, and we stand by to answer any additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Kennedy. We're going to move to the Housing Authority.
Hi, good morning. My name is Crystal Hypleit. I'm the Special Assistant for the Housing Authority Government Relations Department. We submitted a report and we stand by it. I'm here to answer any questions you may have or concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Hypleit. Hypleit, we're going to move on to the Department of Health.
Good morning, everyone. This is Kelly Eastman from the Baltimore City Health Department. We do stand by our bill report for 21-0079R, which is favorable, excuse me. I do want to note that DHD has a pretty limited role with respect to addressing mold. We don't conduct testing for mold or participate in remediation efforts. So we do stand by our report. And I also have invited Jessica Speaker, who is our Assistant Commissioner for Environmental Health, as well as Margaret Schnitzer, the Director of our Asthma Program, on today, in case there are any specific questions to the work that we do. I believe Margaret is call-in user number four, if it's possible to elevate her, in case there are any questions for her. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the City Solicitor.
Yes, hi, Madam Chair. This is the Law Department. We approve the resolution for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you, Ms. Rulie. And at this time, we're going to go, I'm just going to go ahead and open the floor to committee members who have questions for this. And I'm going to go ahead and start. My first question is going to be for DHCD, and this is likely for Mr. Booker. How many mold complaints does DHCD receive in a typical year? How many notices or citations are issued? And how does DHCD follow up to ensure that property owners correct the violations?
Let me start in reverse. I may not have those initial numbers ready for you at this point. But when we go into a property and we get a complaint that there is in fact mold, as the Commissioner stated, we can't detect whether or not it's mold. It could be mildew, it could be dirt, it could just be moisture. But we will conduct that interior inspection to try to determine what the source is, and we will issue a notice for that particular interior violation. That interior violation is, in fact, reinspected in 30 days. And if it hasn't been remedied at that time, we'd make the decision to issue a $250 failure to abate citation. But if we issue it and we say it's the appearance of mold, we might note that while the interior violation may say moisture or defective pipe, we may note on that notice that it has the appearance of mold because, as the Commissioner stated, we don't determine whether or not it's mold. And when we make contact with the homeowner, we ask them to provide a report stating that it is in fact not mold in order to get that notice abated. I have about 1,000 open interior notices. I don't know how many of them are in fact mold-related. But I have about 1,000, about 1,100 interior open notices that we're acting on consistently.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. If a renter has mold in their home and the landlord has failed to clean up the mold or make the necessary repairs when you guys decide or you put on the issue, hey, this may be mold, how can the renter get help from the city? And maybe this is not for Mr. Booker, but I just want us to expound upon what those programs are and what help the city can offer as well.
Well, we will just issue our notice and follow up with citations. With respect to additional assistance from programs, that's not our yield to the Commissioner for that.
Yeah. The code enforcement team under Deputy Booker will be the one to kind of issue the citations. But his team, if it's an owner-occupied property, will definitely connect that homeowner. We have a level of sensitivity and understanding and working with our residents to connect them with resources such as our Office of Rehabilitation Services, weatherization, lead hazard reduction, et cetera. So Deputy Booker's team will make referrals to the Light Intake and Assessment Unit. That intake and assessment unit will help with any application processing and gathering and then see what that person may be eligible for as it relates to, you know, addressing any mold in their home through a loan or grant or through one of the programs. So there's a connection there, but it doesn't, it's a referral connection.
Do our CAP centers work closely with the DHCD's Light Intake and Assessment? This is a follow-up. Do they work closely with the DHCD's Light Intake and Assessment Unit?
Yes, they do, actually. Acting Deputy Nicole Hart on our side for the Homeownership and Housing Preservation Division, and then Director Angela Whitaker of CAP Centers, they have a very strong working relationship. And we do referrals on a number of different of our programs, whether it be home repair and specifically also weatherization as it ties in with weatherization and the Energy Assistance Program.
Okay, I'm going to move on to Councilmember Burnett for his questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the first question I had was around the, I know this topic came up when we were working on the Rental Licensure Bill a few years back. Is there a way to have a mold report submitted when a rental license is being renewed or applied for? I know that's something that we discussed further. I mean, we discussed at that point, and I guess now a few years in to the program, is there any thought or conversation about expanding that requirement?
I don't, we haven't talked about expanding that requirement. You know, we do require the lead paint registration because that also has a component that's mandated at the state level that assists with that. We have not put forth or looked at anything that would require a landlord to obtain a mold test for a property and submit that to us for part of the licensing. So we have not gone back to address what that would take and where that would be, where that requirement would fall within the legislation that governs the licensing as well.
Okay. My second question, and maybe this is for you or Director Booker, but when, is there been consideration about launching a public education campaign, particularly targeting, you know, if you're getting calls from tenants on, you know, potential mold and you're doing an inspection, I feel like that may be a perfect opportunity to provide educational materials on the health implications to the tenants. They may not necessarily, they may know that mold is a problem. They may not be fully aware of the public health, the health impact on them, or may not know, you know, how far it could go. Maybe they do need to see a doctor, et cetera. Has there been consideration to providing additional education materials? Just broadly speaking, but particularly targeting people who we know may be likely to experience the health impacts?
Yeah. You know, that has come up with a number of different items that we think about as, you know, where we have touchpoints, you know, for residents and how to provide as much information and educational information as possible. You know, we do that often, talking about, you know, energy efficiency or asthma triggers, other kind of fallen safety hazard as it relates to older adults and would consider having, you know, the health impacts of mold to be kind of added to that discussion and those materials and parts of the outreach that we do.
And sorry, Madam Chair, are you doing, are we doing two questions or I had a couple more?
You can go ahead.
Okay. Director Kennedy, you mentioned that there was work being done at the state level. Can you expand a little bit about what's being discussed and what the implications would be for us in Baltimore?
I actually would have to check on that to see which bill number it is. And we can work to get you the bill number and follow up with that so that you can have that information. I would want to direct you directly to the bill.
Yeah, and Alice, I can help with that a little bit. This is a topic that comes up, I'm sorry, Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for DHCD. This is an issue that comes up almost every year in Annapolis. And because of the fact that there aren't any federal standards, you know, there are definitely pushes in local jurisdictions to try to establish some. But what this effort is looking to do at the state level is to bring together different state-level entities to produce some recommendations for local jurisdictions by 2024. And the bill number is SB 320 and House Bill 361. So I know that's something, MoGR is tracking that bill down in Annapolis as well. Thanks.
Okay. And my last question for this round would be, Director Kennedy, you noted that the light program, or I guess the weatherization program does provide some support for addressing, I guess, some of the structural issues that lead to mold. Has there been conversation about expanding the types of, I guess, expanding that net, particularly with an influx of federal dollars coming into the city to address many more of the structural concerns that can really continue to perpetuate mold? And can I know that whether you're a renter or a homeowner, those can be really costly expenses. And oftentimes, people will just sort of live with those structural problems until they have the resources to address it. And I can speak to that personally, that I lived in a house at one point that had repetitive basement flooding. And until we had the resources to be able to just really, you know, replace pipes, replace drywall, it was a constant battle to deal with the mold problems that resulted from that. And so until we could actually, like, just tear everything out and start fresh, it was a repeated problem. But, you know, a lot of folks may not have those resources to do something at that scale.
So we have three different programs that can, it's three separate programs. There's one single application through the Light Intake and Assessment Unit that manages that single application and can make referrals to the three different programs that all have the ability in some way, shape, or fashion, either individually or leveraged. So we do a lot of work where we also leverage the funding sources to try to get the most exponential outcome that we have. So we might end up having a property that is getting weatherization funding and they have additional health and safety items in the property. Or we cannot do weatherization and tap into those funds if the roof is leaking. So we need to leverage that. So we need to leverage that with our Office of Rehabilitation funding in order to fix the roof before we can even complete the weatherization. So each case is a little different in terms of how it's managed and, and where the resources come from. Once we do that, let's say that if, if we can't do the weatherization until we fix the roof and we fix the roof, then the weatherization funding does have a small line item for some of those additional health and safety items such as bathroom ventilation fans and some other minor, you know, plumbing or things if, if there were leaks to be occurring there. So it's three programs, all different types of funding. Office of Rehabilitation Services, if a homeowner has a very specific need, specific to mold and needs assistance with getting the testing and remediation done, you know, they could apply for one of the loans that we have through Office of Rehabilitation Services to cover that. If we think that we can couple it to, you know, with other programs to get an exponential outcome, then we will do that as well. So it, it, each property is different and the approach would be different. But we have a number of different ways that we can assist homeowners to tackle some of the issues, not just the mold itself, but the underlying issues as well. And like what, we can't also do weatherization in a property if there is water infiltration in a basement. So we would have to deny that case actually unless we had the other resources where we leverage the rehabilitation resources to take care of that water infiltration in the basement as well. So same with lead hazard reduction actually too. If we can't use the grant dollars for lead hazard reduction, which have also a healthy homes component if there are other major structural deficiencies in the property. So we have to leverage and couple that with other funding sources.
Got it, okay. I, I have a couple more questions, Madam Chair, but I'll defer to the rest of the committee and you can come back to me.
Thank you, Councilmember Burnett. Right now, do we have any other council members on the committee who have questions? I'm not showing any signals raised or any hands raised or anyone on camera with any questions. I'm gonna go, go back to my questions at this time. And this is for the housing authority, the first one is for the housing authority. I want to know how many mold complaints does the housing authority receive from public housing residents in a typical year? Generally, how long does it take to respond and to resolve a complaint that comes in?
All right, thank you for your question. I don't have an exact number of the amount of complaints we've received, but I can get that back to you by the end of the day. Also, if we got a complaint about molds, we typically try to respond within 24 hours for public housing. And then if it's for the voucher program, we issue a notice to the property owner and they have about 30 days to get everything abated. And if they don't, then we remove their, their payments and we give the voucher to the resident so that they can move out.
Before I make, just a first request, I know you said that you'll furnish it by the end of the day. Did you know how many mold complaints that the housing authority also receives from residents in the housing choice voucher programs in a typical year? Or can you also furnish that?
Um, I'll have to furnish that as well later on.
Okay, thank you. So we'll just put in those two requests. How many mold complaints does the housing authority receive from public housing residents in a typical year? Also, how many mold complaints does the housing authority receive from residents in the housing choice voucher program units in a typical year? And the other question I have for HA, HABC is can you, the housing authority, excuse me, can you just discuss how COVID impacted your initial annual and special inspections for housing choice voucher holders?
Um, I don't believe that COVID impacted the inspections of it. You know, we take mold really seriously and we send the inspectors out to look at the mold complaints. It is up to the property owner to have it remediated as soon as possible. Does that answer your question?
Does the prop, for, for the first one, you said within out, within the public housing units, they have 30 days to remediate, is that the same with property owners within the voucher program?
Yes, they do have within 30 days or a specified time, time limit, yes. And then we send the inspector back out again to make sure that the mold has been cleaned up and removed. It is the property owner's responsibility to do that.
Okay, thank you. We're going to, before I move back to Councilmember Burnett, were there any other committee members with questions? Okay, I have Councilmember Torrance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is straightforward for housing. Do we advise residents or tenants of their rights if they are a tenant and they suspect mold? What things that they can do through court processes or other avenues to advocate for themselves to have the repairs done right away?
Absolutely. You know, the key thing that we inform them of, if they have any issues around the violations and repairs in their property is to go through and work with the rent escrow process, which is their key, the key tool that they have to protect themselves in terms of getting items repaired in their property. That's a key area. And in addition to not only telling them about the rent escrow process, we also do refer them to legal service providers that provide assistance as well.
And then here's my question for, similar to what Chairwoman McCray alluded to, the persons who are receiving our vouchers for our, from our residents, what consequences do we have if they do not remediate right away in a timely manner? Do we then move the resident or do we no longer allow them to rent or accept vouchers? I just have more process oriented questions.
And Ms. Hippolyte, that, that question's gonna be for you.
I'm sorry, I couldn't get my buttons to work. Yes, we do allow the residents to move with their voucher.
And then for the person who was accepting the voucher, do we no longer allow them to participate in the programming if they do not abate these issues?
Um, I know that, that, I'm not sure about that. I can find out and let you know, but I do know that that resident will be allowed to move out. Obviously, you know, before someone moves in, there's an inspection, an inspection process. And if there is mold, they wouldn't be allowed to have someone move into their residence, residence.
So I can, Madam Chair, if you can make this a request, I would like to know the number of persons that we have either prevented from accepting vouchers again because I know that there's been frequent landlords who have violated, had code violations. And I want to know how do we deal with those persons when they do have frequent code violations or a serial violator?
Thank you, Councilmember Torrance. And Ms. Hippolyte, if you could just also furnish that information to the committee?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. We're going to go back to Councilmember Burnett. Did you have, did you have any additional questions?
Yes, absolutely. Okay. So to, our HABC rep, Ms. Hippolyte, can you walk us through the, the inspection process? Like, what does that look like? Does, do, does your staff do mold testing?
Yes, our staff are trained and they are certified to do mold testing and removal of it. We also do have an environmental engineer on staff for, for issues that are really big square footage that, that step in and help abate the issues.
And is that, is that federal policy or is that, or does the, as far as the inspection, is that across the board in any state, any city? Is that the standard?
Um, I'm not sure if it's a federal policy. I know that it's something that we have internally that we do for our residents.
Okay, and I'll, I'll follow up with you offline on, on some of the more, the policies side of this. Thank you. My next question is for Commissioner Kennedy. Can you speak to what type of training inspectors, code enforcement inspectors? You mentioned that they provide information on rent escrow or other forms of representation. We've been working with a number of tenants in our district and our experience is that, that hasn't taken place. Can you, I guess, speak to, I guess, what materials are handed out or what training or how often the training is occurring? And I guess obviously we'll, we'll, we'll give you the specific instances offline so that, you know, that information can, the feedback can go back to their supervisors on that.
Yeah, and I'm actually gonna defer to Deputy Booker on this. His, his team, not only do they go through their comprehensive training to, you know, pass certifications for property maintenance inspections, but they also do regular updates and training information, sharing of information during their daily, you know, daily, weekly, monthly staff meetings and coordination with their teams and their superintendents and assistant superintendents. So information and resources are always kind of flowing through, providing the inspectors with additional information and reminders on, on what is available out there and what can be provided to tenants, you know, in terms of next steps that they can take or, or resources that are available, whether it be legal resources or financial resources, et cetera. But I'll let Deputy Booker dive a little bit deeper into that process with you.
Sure. So Councilman, we have, when inspectors come on board, first and foremost, they go through six months of training before they actually are on the street. My apprentices go through a year's worth of training before they're actually full fledged inspectors. But most of my interior inspector inspections are done by my senior inspectors. The senior inspector is required to have the property maintenance certification from the International Code Council in order to be a senior inspector. So when they conduct these, also I should state that we have roll calls every morning in every district. And in addition to in-service trainings, we look at a lot of stuff. A lot of our in-service trainings are aligned on what season we're moving into. For example, coming into winter, we're gonna talk about heat, pipes bursting, that kind of stuff. Going into the summer, we're talking about high grass and weed. So we have a continuous flow of training and communication. So the senior inspectors, when they approach a property, of course, at this particular time, we're off, we're concerned about COVID, but they are knowledgeable of what referral pieces are in place. We don't have a, a document that we hand out. We used to have a document that had the top 10 code violations pamphlet that we would hand out. But I think that's something that we could, we could add in the mix in addition to word of mouth referral.
Okay, yeah, that would be helpful. I, I think, that would be my follow up, you answered, I guess, the answer to that government, the follow up I had as far as, you know, the making sure materials are handed out. But it didn't sound like there are materials. So yeah, it would be great and I'm happy to, you know, work with you all if I can be helpful. My office can be helpful in conveying some of our experiences that we've had with tenants on this issue and, and, and offer some, you know, feedback on any materials that are going out. Because I do think it would be helpful for folks to have something in hand that they could refer back to after an inspection. I, I did wanna, I thought this was a good question that was sent over from another individual in the hearing asking if tenants could receive notice that their landlord was cited for mold. I guess what kind of communication do tenants receive? And is that something that they could be provided so that they are aware of the situation?
Yeah, I, I would, you know, we say cited for mold. I just wanted to repeat the fact that we don't have a violation that specifically says mold. It's interior sanitation. So the fact that there is in fact a notice, the notice is public information is, it would be out on our website that there's an interior violation that exists, but it would not specifically say mold. And I'll yield to Deputy Commissioner Hessler for the, the legal side of that.
And general, when the violation notices are issued, the tenant is present. Access needs to be granted, so the tenant's aware that the inspection's occurring. For years now, we've put a copy of our violation notice available on our website and can be downloaded. And then the, the inspector does respond back out to the property after the notice has been issued, posted on the property to complete the requirement for service on the property owner. But it does, you know, provide them, you know, access to the notice as well. Not immediately, but, you know, prior to any kind of court action or most likely abatement.
Okay, that would, yeah, I think that would be helpful as, as far as a little bit more like something in hand, education piece. Madam Chair, I did have a, two more questions, if that's okay, or if you want me to hold for another round.
You can ask your questions now.
Okay. So the other question I had, and I think we have someone here from the Health Department. The, does the Health Department offer or provide education around mold exposure? And if not, could that be a consideration for a citywide education campaign?
Speaker, Assistant Commissioner for Environmental Health. We do not have any flyers or handouts for mold exposure, but I will ask Margaret if she's on the line for asthma, if you have anything.
Margaret is here, but she is currently on as an attendee. So we would need her elevated.
So we can't elevate her, but we will unmute her at this time.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Ah, great, that's great, thank you. So with the community asthma program, we consistently do a lot of education around mold as we do around all asthma triggers, helping families identify where potential mold may be, the causes of mold, how best to clean it if it's a small area. And there, and what they can do if it's a more of a structural issue, if they're, if they're living with a, you know, rental property or referring them to light if they're living in an owner occupied building. So because it's an asthma trigger, we do do education about it, around it for those families who we conduct, for whom we conduct home visits. Does that answer your question?
Uh, yeah, it does. And I, and I guess what's the referral, referral process? If we wanted to direct people who contacted our office to that, to this program so they can get more information on it?
Sure, you can email us at asthma@baltimorecity.gov.
That's straightforward.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, that's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, we try.
Okay, thank you. And Madam Chair, my, my last question, and I'm not sure again if this is referred to DGS, but if someone is on the line or could speak to the city's, I guess, city owned properties, how do we, do we test for mold in city owned properties? Do we hire, like, I guess, what's the remediation process for city owned buildings? Whether those are rec centers or city owned vacant properties that are, you know, being transferred, you know, through the, some, some process, whether that's vacant to value or some other process to, before, you know, before they're sold? Or I guess, speaking broadly, how, how do we handle mold in, in city owned buildings?
So I can, I can speak to the vacant, like, the vacant city properties under DHCD through vacancy values. So we do not do any testing as part of the disposition of city prop, of city vacant properties. You know, the majority of city owned vacant properties are significantly, significantly damaged. Some, you know, don't have Some, you know, don't have roofs or walls. And all of those properties, we need to undergo complete renovation in order to, you know, get their use-in-occupancy permit with a significant number of items that are currently in the property are typically removed from the property through an interior demolition and our deconstruction phase. So we don't do any testing prior to disposing of the property and any, any mold, anything specific to mold or environmental testing would be on the purchaser of that property to address as, as part of their renovation of the property.
Got it. And I, I guess, no one's from DGS on here, I don't think it was referred to them. So I'll, I'll follow up, Madam Chair, with DGS on the other city buildings. That's all I have for this round, Madam Chair.
Okay, well, my question was for the Health Department, and it was answered by Margaret because I had a specific question about the community asthma program. So thank you, Margaret, for answering that question. Are there any additional committee members who have questions at this time before we move into public testimony? And seeing and hearing none at this time. I'm sorry, did I miss someone? Okay, so the committee staff is now going to call on members of the public who wish to testify on the resolution. Members of the public, you will have two minutes each to provide your testimony. For those of you who are signing using a computer, please use the raise hand function to indicate if you wish to testify, and we will start to, we will start with you. Next, we're going to go through all of the users who have called into the hearing. Attendees who called in who cannot be identified by name, you will be unmuted by the committee staff, one by one. You will hear two beeps when you're unmuted, and if you wish to testify, please state your name at the beginning of your testimony. If a caller does not want to provide testimony, you simply need to say so after the two beeps. And if for any reason the speaker is inaudible, you will be directed to call back. Matthew Peters is going to go ahead and take over at this time for public testimony.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, we have Morgan. Morgan, you are unmuted.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you. Um, yeah, my name's Morgan Herel, and I'm an advocate for the residents at the Hills Apartments under Swett Partners. There was an issue with the report of mold in March. And the following month, and the following month, in April, the city came back out, and it was reported that was corrected. In November, I personally paid to get the testing done because, like, it's been reported to your, from your committee staff and city members, employees, testing is not done when a complaint is made. So the testing was done and the mold was still present. The residents or resident there whom was of greatest concern is fighting brain cancer. And all of these things had developed in the process. There's no accountability for the owners. And the city, apparently, from what I've experienced, is circumventing that process of identifying that the mold exists by language and by fact. So that's my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kieran Smith.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, my name is Kieran Smith, and I'm a renter who resides in the Fallstaff Glen neighborhood. I have prepared remarks that I'm reading. I'm here today to share my personal experience. In 2019, my three children and I were displaced from our home due to extensive mold in an apartment that we have been living in for over two years. The mold was growing throughout the apartment, and the worst of it was in our HVAC closet, where the contaminated air was just being circulated throughout. We had to throw away all of our furnishings because of the mold growing on them. And air quality testing that I actually had to pay for out of pocket also revealed that the levels of mold in my apartment were 10 times the level of molds outside the building. And my landlord's own inspectors confirmed that there was a mold problem. I was offered other units in the development, and they too had mold issues, some worse than my original unit. At the recommendation of my children's health providers and following the discovery of more mold elsewhere in the unit, my family vacated the apartment, but our ordeal did not end there. Both my children and I have had ongoing health issues because of the prolonged and excessive mold exposure. My eldest daughter, who was three years old at that time, had chronic eczema and developed respiratory allergies, which she still suffers from. All of my children had frequent respiratory infections, not shared by their peers. And lab tests ordered by my own doctor showed elevated levels of mold in my blood, above normal limits that they would expect to see. I experienced chronic headaches, asthma, respiratory infections, and sinus blockages. It's been almost three years since I relocated my family, and we are still dealing with these health issues. I urge the Baltimore City Council, as well as the Mayor's Office, to take action to protect Baltimore City residents, especially the most vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tisha Guthrie.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes, thank you. My name is Tisha Guthrie. And I've lived and learned in Baltimore for most of my life. Due to various medical conditions, which have affected my, my health status, I qualified for a housing choice voucher, and I've been using one since 2010. My experience with various landlords, property managers, and local housing agencies led me to be, become involved in housing advocacy on both a local and a state level. I established residency at Bolton House Apartments in 2013 under the management of Edgewood Property Management. During that time, I have witnessed and personally experienced the health consequences of poorly maintained housing. I won't get into all the details, but definitely mold exposure has been one of them. A mold exposure, which on a daily basis imposes serious health threats and long-term consequences. Such conditions are unacceptable, toxic, and indeed, life-threatening. For someone like me, who has an eye condition which has left me with partial vision, I also have a kidney and a pancreas transplant, and I'm immunocompromised and have a suppressed immune, immune, immune system, such exposure can indeed be lethal and fatal. In 2020, Maryland renters who endure exposure to mold face the dual risk of coronavirus outside the home and respiratory illness within. We've had nowhere to turn for reprieve and an absence of a law that prescribes, that prescribes how mold in housing should be addressed and mitigated. Residents or renters have had little, if any recourse to compel property owners to remove mold from their residence. Due to the lack of mold testing mandates and air quality standards, I have been exposed to toxic mold with no legal recourse. And I, I really won't go any further, but just to say that after, after 10 months of virtual confinement to mold, to a mold-infested building, not only were we, were my symptoms exacerbated, symptoms that were just, the, the exact same symptoms that you heard from the last speaker are things that I have also experienced. The chronic headaches and the sinus infections. You know, there's, there's nowhere to turn. So I, I ask that this be taken seriously, not just as a personal issue, but as a public, as a public health concern. You have children, you have vulnerable residents, and the, the greater public at large that, that pays for these, these, these poor health conditions, whether it be out of emergency room visits, or you have children who are missing school and to our acquiring undue health conditions based on poor living standards. So I thank you for hearing my testimony that you.
Thank you. Next, we have Vincent Penix.
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, this is Vincent Penix. I'm, also, I'm an advocate for the residents of, of the Hills Apartments, which is managed by Swett Partners. We, we have put to their attention on numerous occasions that, that there was black mold that existed on their, at their apartment complex. And also, uh, we thought, just recently, that this, that this conglomerate didn't have a, a, a rental license to rent. And for all the tenants that complained about this black mold, where we have pictures of, the pictures are horrendous. They got all us evicted from their premises. They evicted all of us, and I was the last one. And when, uh, the sad part about it is that, um, that there was major retaliation for the black mold. And, I mean, for, for us reporting the black mold. And, um, we went down to the City Hall, and City Hall told us that, that they don't test for black mold. So your, your speaker, who spoke Morgan Herrera, I said, let me reiterate what she said, that, that she had an inspector come out that she paid for out of pocket. And, and this inspector told her that there was a high level of black mold. And we took these findings, I said, we, we sent them to, to Swett Partners, and they did nothing. There is no protection that, that we have as, as residents and of, of getting this matter rectified. And it's, it's, it's sad, it's, it's a sad situation. And we don't, and the residents don't have no recourse. And like I said, and, and I don't mean to be redundant, but, but when we let these, when we let management knew of, of the condition, they, they retaliated and went to court and filed breach of lease, I mean, a breach of lease proceeding to get the tenants evicted. And, and they circumvented that process, well, for those that was under Jack Young and Brandon Scott's eviction provision program, it had prohibited them from going under that, uh, that, that protocol, because once they signed that contract with the city of Baltimore, it precluded them for eviction for fare to pay. So they, so they, they bypassed that process and did the breach of lease, which is uncovered under the, the, the directive that the City Council of Baltimore and the Mayor's Office had. So like I said, so basically, like I said, uh, I, I don't know what the committee can do in regards to this matter, but I, I, but I appreciate that this respected committee of support the bill in regards to tenants who report these bad actors. Thank you.
Thank you. A reminder for anyone testifying, please limit your testimony to two minutes. Next, we have Anthony Peluso.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, good morning, everyone. My name is Anthony Peluso, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Justice for Victims of Crime Clinic at the University of Maryland Law School. And I'd like to echo many of the other testimonies so far this morning. Mold has become a serious problem in Baltimore city housing. But unfortunately, there are not many available remedies for tenants in the city who are dealing with mold in their property. And the primary, primary legal tool available to tenants is rent escrow, but mold by itself is not a basis for establishing rent escrow. Instead, tenants need to prove that their housing is a threat to their life, health, or safety. And unfortunately, what we found in the clinic is that many tenants face an uphill battle proving that mold conditions are present and are a threat to their health. When a rent escrow action is initiated, city inspectors are the ones primarily responsible for conducting the inspection. And they're often not trained or qualified to perform mold inspections. They're only able to see, as you and I can, with their naked eye. And that leads to landlords who are aware of this situation and are simply able to cover up the mold on the surface level, just enough to pass the inspection without addressing underlying issues. One of my clients, who currently lives in an apartment that's rampant with mold, has on multiple occasions had a, had a city inspector come by. And each time, the landlord has been able to just cover up the mold or underlying water damage, but not addressing the real root of the problem. So I would urge the committee to, to allocate more resources to training city inspectors so that they can be better qualified to evaluate when mold is present within properties. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Vernadine Kimball.
Yes, good morning. I've seen a lot of mold, and this particular apartment complex, they suffer with this mold. One young man, he's had a stroke, and he has nobody to advocate for him. He has mold all up under his cabinets, right there by the sink. And he said that the, the maintenance people said it was a pipe, and they did what they could, and then they paint, paint over top of it. But it always come back. Being that he is disabled, is there any way we can get him a new place to live? Or can we get somebody to come out there and address the problem? And if so, how would I do it?
Thank you for your testimony. If you can place or privately send myself with a sponsor, place your email within the chat. We'll call one of our offices, my telephone number, 410-396-4808. We will get you the information that you are requesting. This is a time for testimony. Unfortunately, at this time, we are not able to direct questions. But if you contact our offices, we will try to point you in the right direction. Thank you.
Would you repeat that phone number?
My name is Danielle McPray. My office telephone number is 410-396-4808. Feel free to give my office a call, you can call right now, we're staffed until 5 o'clock.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you for your testimony.
Next, we have Matthew Vachi.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the committee. My name is Matt Vachi, I, I guess I'm a housing advocate for tenants. I'm an attorney who's in private practice, and about 90% of the work that I do is representing tenants, and a vast majority of that is in Baltimore City. I've handled toxic mold cases for, and throughout my 15 years as an attorney. I've handled toxic mold cases for, uh, and throughout my fifteen years as an attorney. Um, and I think that it, it's good to hear that, that everyone has recognized that this is a significant issue. Um, there's a correlation with asthma, um, and housing correlates with, um, the, the health and overall well-being of, uh, children and families in Baltimore city. Um, I, I, overall, I think that what I would urge is there needs to be a significant effort on the part of inspectors and the housing authority, and significant and serious enforcement actions, um, against, uh, offenders who are making people live with mold and moisture, uh, in their homes. You have forty-eight hours to get, uh, moisture, once there's a moisture event, to get it dry before mold is going to grow. So thirty days is, is way too long for an abatement action. And an abatement action cannot be to paint over the mold. Um, so there is no testing that's being done, um, through certain, um, entities through the city. Um, and i- if the mold or mildew, or the appearance of mold is simply painted over, or in some instances, I've just seen drywall or boards placed over, um, areas. If that's passed through an inspection, the underlying issue still exists. The health of those occupants is still at risk, and it cannot be. Um, I guess I would challenge that, that I, I have heard today, a lot of the kind of, this is how it, in a perfect world, would happen. Um, but I think that many of the people, uh, on this know that it is not, uh, a smooth operation for tenants who have mold issues and who complain about them. Uh, I, I would be quite interested in seeing if there was an actual audit of those who are fined for having moisture intrusion or mold problems, uh, in their homes for those interior health issues. Um, there are repeat, um, landlords and property management companies that are well-known to many people, that continue to operate with near impunity and, uh, receive enforcement violations ad nauseam for years without ever actually facing the music. Um, and, uh, I, I also, if I was a council person, would be interested to hear if there are any landlords or property management companies that were actually barred from voucher programs or, uh, other subsidies due to placing the, the life, health, and safety of the residents at issue, including through mold or moisture. Um, I, we get so many calls for mold, uh, related issues. We cannot, as a private entity, the Public Justice Center, the, the advocates can't, uh, do lawsuits for everyone that has issues this way. It is a huge problem, and it needs a significant response. So I'd urge, um, the mayor, city council, the, the council people to, um, to move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And it looks like we have a couple callers in the meeting. Uh, callers, you'll hear, uh, two beeps when you're unmuted. And first caller, you're unmuted now. If you have testimony. And no response.
Hello? Hello?
Yes.
Hi, um, I'm unmuted?
Uh, you are unmuted.
Yes, hi. My name is Erica Hamlet. And I have had an issue with mold and was a housing voucher recipient. Um, um, had wet and moisture in my basement for about three months. Couldn't figure out what the source was. Um, my rental company at the time was Domain Management. Um, they came out, it was so much water and moisture in my basement that it was causing the floor tiles to float up and the water to come away from the wall. Um, there were black spots all over. I finally had to, um, put my rent escrow, and they came out to inspect. The inspectors, um, basically informed you that because they are not mold experts, they can't confirm and or deny if it is mold. But they would recommend that your rental company treat, um, as such. And treating to some of these property owners is just merely painting, um, and washing. And they provided with, they provided me with a air filter, which they put the holes in a tote where my summer clothes were stored, and everything was, was wet, but that's a whole nother story. Um, and people don't understand that when you are a recipient of a housing voucher, if the landlord owner does not remedy the problem in a certain amount of time, your voucher is voided and you have to move, or you will be responsible for the rent at that property. Um, so going through the process is difficult because there is no, there's no one to say if it's mold or not, or recommend or demand for these rental companies and home, um, um landlords to fix them. Um, and it went on in my home for months. Come to find out, it was the washing drain. It was not wide enough, so it was not draining properly. It would overflow and run down the wall and the inside. But because they basically refused to come out and figure out what the problem was, they did not remedy it. And having a housing inspector come out didn't resolve the issue either because they just used the excuse that they can't, they're not mold experts, so they can't say whether it's mold or not. I purchased my own in-home mold testing kit, and it came back positive. Um, I've also had it happen to me when I was a renter in the county as well. Mold is a very tricky subject that landlords and property owners maneuver around because there are no clear laws or guidelines to protect the renter.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have, uh, Sharice Lu.
Good morning, committee members. Uh, this is Sharice Lu with the Public Justice Center. I am actually going to read, uh, remarks or testimony by Charmel Rhines, a Baltimore city resident. I also have, um, I also have testimony from the Public Justice Center, but I will exit and let other people go and re-raise my hand in order to do so. So thank you. I used to live, this is Charmel Rhine. I used to live at twenty-five twenty Harlem Avenue. During my tenancy, there were, there was mold all throughout the property caused by a leaking roof that let in water, which caused mo- moisture and mold to be trapped in the walls. Whenever it would rain, moisture would run down my walls and windows. Eventually, the mold ate through the walls and the kitchen cabinets and disintegrated the dining room wall. I even found mushrooms growing out of my carpet. Every time that I would complain to the landlord, he would change the name of the LLC, and I would have to begin the notice process all over again. At some point, the health department came and inspected the roof. The owner of the next-door property came out and informed the inspector that the roof to my, the property I lived in was so damaged that it was impacting his house. The health department explained that was not, the health department inspector complained that, or explained that he was not, that was not his concern. No one followed up thereafter. My son was taken to the hospital multiple times for severe headache, infection, low blood oxygen levels. I just wanted to leave. I paid twelve hundred dollars a month. I live and work in Baltimore city my entire life, and there was no one to help me. I just wanted to live in a clean and healthy environment. I am a pollution control specialist, a scientist, and it broke my heart that I was exposing my son to such hazardous environment. I was desperate to vacate the property. I was trying to get out the best that I could, and there was no one to help me. I was finally able to move out in December twenty nineteen. However, for four months, at least four months after, I suffered from depression. I felt used, embarrassed, and like I wasn't even worth helping. The landlord profited from my suffering. I asked that Baltimore city do something so this doesn't have to happen to anyone else. Thank you. Again, that was Charmel Rhine.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have Robin Davis.
Hello?
Yes.
Can anyone hear me?
We can.
My name is Robin Davis, and, um, I'm brain cancer. I lived at forty-six ten Pennsyl City Road, sweat partners for three and a half years. I as well hold a OSHA-ten Construction Safety and Health Card and an international, um, Local fifty-seven out of Philadelphia. I did construction for eight years. I started suffering headaches as I was working the Hopkins. To make a long story short, I have a rare case of brain cancer. Now, I have to go back to get surgery, March second. This will be my third since two thousand and twenty. I've only been in Baltimore since two thousand and seventeen. So my kids as well was, um, my daughter kept on saying, "Mom, you know what? My sinuses, my head hurts, my head hurts." But, um, I asked my doctor about the mold and, um, I'm sorry, the black mold. I was the one in forty-six ten, the Hills Apartment, that they were doing demolition, and they said we were just, um, renovating. I called the city up. The city said, "No, they don't have a permit." I said, "I know they don't. They're still doing demolition." I took pictures, I took pictures, I sent it to, um, all the councilmen. Well, not all the councilmen, several councilmen. I, I, I sent it anywhere that I could send it, and nothing happened. We did have a couple inspectors that came out and was like, "Oh, we can't do anything about it." Or, I'm sorry, they didn't come out till maybe two months later. Um, I was retaliated. I'm still homeless. For the simple fact, I tried to buy a home, and the people, sweat partners, for, they said I owed four thousand dollars in back rent, which the city failed to finish paying them, or however that goes. I cannot move on to get a home, sleeping on the floor because of sweat partners in a mold. I've been wanting to get out of there because I know black mold. And when I seen it and went downstairs, it runs up the interior wall. So I already knew that it was a leak, and they kept on painting it with this, um, white paint, this waterproof paint, which then they discarded the, um, the drywall, the, um, two-by-fours. They framed everything up, put up everything new, and just covered it up. Forty-six ten is affected by mold severely because the, the, the brain cancer I have is called predoma. Nobody knows about it. So I asked the doctor the other day because I had to see an ENT doctor to see if they're gonna split my skull open or they can do the surgery through my nose. And I said, "How did I get this?" She said, "Bad luck." I couldn't respond because she'll be the woman that's working, assisting my neurosurgeon. All my doctors know about this black mold. I've showed them pictures. They said, "Robin, move out." I said, "Well, are you gonna divorce your wife?" Because I needed some place to stay. And now I try, me and my daughter, to get a home, and we're going to closing, and they X me out because of my rental verification. And they wouldn't even verify my rental verification, which they put my house back on the market. And I go back to the surgery, March second, and I'm scared. Coming out of Philadelphia, L and I, you call anything, license inspection is right there on it. Those inspectors did not come out. I remember they came out on Easter Sunday. And I asked them, "Are you coming to forty-six ten?" He said, "No." I said, "I heard it on your radio. You said I'm at forty-six ten." Easter Sunday, inspectors get paid. Are these inspectors OSHA-ten certi- do they have certifications? Because I do. That's why I got kicked out. They said tenant holding over, I have two kids. I have five total, but I have two younger kids living with me. Embarrassment, humiliation, stress, anything you can think of. They said, "Robin, you're severely depressed." I said, "A two-year-old, a blind man would know that." Who can help me? I tried to move forward. Who can help me? I'm scared. This is my third surgery since two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty. That's hard to say. Nobody helps. Nobody helps.
Ms. Clark, we are, we are grateful for your testimony.
Um, next, we have Gabriella Dixon LaRota. You are unmuted.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I'm a paralegal. I work for the Public Justice Center on the Human Right to Housing team. Today, I will be reading testimony on behalf of a client, Yamileth, who used to live at five twenty-two North Highland Avenue, um, Baltimore, Maryland, two one two oh five. This is her testimony. I moved into the property in June twenty twenty. When I first moved in, I didn't notice anything. But my family and friends would not visit because they said that the place smelled terribly. Within a few weeks, me and my two sons were having trouble breathing. At some point, my sons and I contracted COVID-nineteen, and it took us a long time to heal. We had to sleep sitting up with a pillow against our backs just to be able to breathe. I told my landlord about the mold on June twenty-fifth. He told me to learn how to speak English and get out if I didn't like it. He would speak gibberish and yell outside for my neighbors to hear that I was an immigrant and couldn't speak English. My sons, who speak perfect English, saw and heard everything. I was so ashamed. Eventually, we started having frequent doctor's visits. The mold was so bad, the air was moist, and all of our clothing had mold in it. The, the clothes in the closet and drawers. I developed vaginal infections and rashes. My boys could not breathe and had rashes all over their bodies. My doctors told me to leave the property because they found mold on my private parts and underwear. Eventually, the landlord gave me a sixty-day notice. I was happy with that until he started to come to my door every single day and scream things like, "I know speak English." One of my neighbors would point and laugh. The sixty days were hell. I was scared of him. We were able to move, but we should have had some help. I was humiliated. I am testifying to help others. Please stop this from happening.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I think that is the last of the public testimony.
Okay, thank you, um, Matt. I want to say just thank you to everyone who has testified today, um, on this matter. That is going to conclude public testimonial resolution two one dash zero zero seven nine R. Um, is there a motion to recommend the resolution favorably?
So move, Torrance.
And is there a, is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion to move from Councilman Torrance. I have a second from Councilman Dorsey. McCray is a yes. Ballack?
Yes.
Conway?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Porter? Is Councilwoman Porter with us? Councilwoman Porter is marked absent for the vote. Councilman Torrance?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Schleifer?
Yes.
This motion has passed, um, six to zero. The committee will report the resolution at the next city council meeting. We are going to go into recess until about eleven thirty-eight, and then we're going to come back for the second bill. Thank you. Good morning. We are now going to move on to Resolution two one dash zero zero six for our investigational, investigational hearing, Urban Farming, for the purpose of inviting the city solicitor and representatives from the Office of the City Administrator, the- and representatives from the Office of the City Administrator, the Department of Housing and Community Development's Code Enforcement Division, the Baltimore City Health Department's Office of Animal Control, the Baltimore Police Department, the Environmental Control Board, the Department of Planning and other relevant stakeholders to brief the city council on the standards, procedures and policies, excuse me, policies and practices for regulating urban farms in Baltimore City. And to discuss possible revisions of current standards to allow urban farms to operate safely and successfully in Baltimore City. For this hearing, we will start with brief opening remarks from the resolution sponsor. Then we're going to hear from reporting agencies as well as Ulysses Archie from the Baltimore Gift Economy. Committee members will then have the opportunity to ask questions. And after that, we're going to move on to public testimony. Urban agriculture has grown exponentially across the country and Baltimore City has been a model of that expansion. Urban agriculture is a part of the fabric of our city. And our farmers are proven integral pieces in the fight against climate change and food insecurity, along with being the stewards of educational opportunities and community togetherness. We have seen urban farmers play a key role during the COVID nineteen pandemic and providing our most vulnerable with fresh produce and generosity. Again, it is imperative that we take a look at current practices and how to better them to ensure the success of urban farming across our city. We're now going to hear from the resolution sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman.
Thank you, Madam Chair and colleagues. So I'll keep my remarks short on this one because I know we have a lot of testimony, a lot of folks that have joined us this afternoon to share their experiences. But in short, um, this resolution originated from a conversation I had with Mr. Archie and other advocates for expanding urban farming, urban agriculture, community gardens, you name it. Really just pushing for an easing of restrictions, additional resources available to folks who want to engage in an urban agriculture in our city and are just looking for additional support. And so we thought that this was a great opportunity to engage the council and our agency staff to both hear from what folks are dealing with on the ground that is, you know, creating some challenges for them, to hear some feedback on new initiatives that may have made things a little bit better. Because I do want to acknowledge that our agencies have been trying to work with folks on the ground to to make it easier to do this. Food systems are important in Baltimore and we've seen during this pandemic the real impacts of, you know, global food systems and delivery systems can, you know, impact and create shortages at the grocery store. And so for people to be able to support themselves and support their families and ability to gain access to healthy foods, that can often mean growing it yourself. And so we want to make it as as easy as possible for people to be able to do that safely. And so that they can, you know, make sure that they're still able to get fruits and vegetables as we navigate these global challenges that may be beyond our control as a city of Baltimore. But what is in our control is our ability to to encourage and support folks who are engaging in urban agriculture. Like Mr. Archie and others who we'll hear from today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Burnett. And again, thank you for bringing this important resolution before this committee and the city council. We're now going to hear from agency representatives, committee members. I just ask that you hold your questions until we have heard from everyone. And we're going to start with the Office of Sustainability, Department of Planning.
Hi, good morning, Madam Chairwoman and committee members. My name is Ava Richardson. I'm the Sustainability Manager in the Office of Sustainability and joined by Abby Cock, who is an environmental planner in our office as well. We are in support of Council Bill two-one zero zero six for our. Our twenty nineteen sustainability plan supports the expansion of urban agriculture and protecting existing farms through policies, administrative coordination and enhanced funding. We acknowledge in our report that African Americans and other historically oppressed groups have been systemically stripped of opportunities for land, property and ownership and that more needs to be done to accommodate and and address some of these challenges. So now I'll pass things off to Abby Cock, who will share and provide an overview of the standards, policies, procedures and practices and some considerations for urban farms and community gardens in Baltimore City.
And Abby, just give me one second. I'm going to step in really quickly. I know you guys have a presentation. For colleagues, this presentation was emailed to you yesterday at three oh nine P M. If you want to pull up that email and Abby, so we can make sure that we ensure that we do have time for all public testimony. Can you give a high point since this presentation was already sent to colleagues ahead of time for review when you put it up? So I'm just going to say I have a hard stop at ten minutes.
Understood. Thank you so much. It's an honor to have the opportunity to address the committee. And I'm going to run through my information quickly. Let me see if I can. There we go. Okay. So, uh, we consider as the city of Baltimore, growing food an important part of resilience. We consider farms essential businesses and have been providing support for local farms through the Healthy Food Priority Funds of the Baltimore Food Policy and Planning Initiative in the Department of Planning. There are more than a hundred food-producing community gardens and school gardens in the city, more than twenty-five urban farms. Depends on how you count it exactly. We make that distinction in terms of are you growing food for yourself and your sort of family, your classmates? Are you growing food primarily for production for sale? These sites total more than thirty-two acres across at least eighty neighborhoods. And many engage in regular food sales in their neighborhoods and or giveaways of food. In terms of methods of access to city-owned land, many gardens start with an adopt-a-lot license, which is basically free right of entry through the housing department. We also have a land leasing program for urban farms. We've had limited progress with that. We've just executed four of those leases. We're talking to a few more people and working with the Farm Alliance of Baltimore on leasing for a new farm incubator project in Farring Bay Brook Park that would be for training urban farmers. There have also been some sales of city-owned properties used for agriculture to the Baltimore Green Space Land Trust, including community gardens that have been transferred into community-based farms that are currently in the land disposition process. Departments of Planning and Housing and Community Development are working on a request for proposals that would go out hopefully in fall, two thousand and twenty-two, that could be either for leases or sales. So we're putting that list together now and the next step on that is community outreach. In terms of the existing land leasing process, we ask people to submit their qualifications. We're looking for at least a year of farming experience for production and sale. Sustainable Management Plan, Community Engagement Plan. It's a five-year lease with a nominal fee. We developed last year some new community engagement procedures around those land leases that, you know, lay out how we would work with the community, notify adjacent residents, have the conversation and make sure that people want to see this use in this place. And some basic standards around maintenance and community engagements. Some of the regulations that apply to farms in Baltimore City in relation to zoning and permitting. There are use permit categories for community-managed open space gardens, which are permitted use in most zoning districts. Community-managed open space farms, those that incorporate livestock farm stands and or compost drop-off from the neighborhood that are conditional use. And then urban agriculture businesses, which are conditional use. And the only zones in the city where those allowances differ are some of the industrial zones. There are some limits to the structures that you can have on these types of uses as per the zoning code. You may be required to submit a management plan if you're doing certain types of activities as an urban agriculture business. And where food is being grown for human consumption in the existing soil, we require some basic soil testing and some investigation of the site history, not, you know, sort of a full expensive EPA certified use history. But we we do have a soil safety policy and some guidance videos that we've created with the Center for a Livable Future. Other considerations for zoning and permitting, where more than five thousand square feet of land is being disturbed, applicants have to receive a grading permit. Agricultural activities as per state law are exempt from standard stormwater management requirements up into a certain size. But they have to follow alternate procedures that a public, Department of Public Works oversees. We also have an urban agriculture tax credit. It's a ninety percent off tax credit for urban farms. They have to produce at least five thousand dollars in annual value of plants or animals and maintain the use for at least five years or repay the tax credit. And we've got just a few parcels of land receiving that credit currently. Many of our farms are nonprofit or are on institutional or city-owned land. And so taxes are less of a concern for them. But this is an attempt to incentivize more farms starting on privately-owned land. Terms of water access, we work with the Departments of Housing and Public Works on their water access program. It's a flat fee of a hundred and twenty dollars a year where you can connect to unused water meter pits adjacent to your site. Not all sites have access to these kind of water meter pits. And so we've been involved in the past in helping sites install them. We're raising a little bit of more money now to do a few more of those. But it can be very expensive when you're running a new line from the water main and you have to repair it. The Department of Health, of course, oversees animal husbandry regulations. There are allowances for chickens, bees, goats, rabbits and pot-bellied pigs. I won't get too deeply into this because you know they're here as well and can speak through it. In terms of our policies as a city in relation to urban agriculture, we have an urban ag plan that was created in two thousand and thirteen. We were set to update it in two thousand and twenty, but other concerns came online at that time, as you all may recall. So this is still our two thousand and thirteen plan. But there's a lot of these things that still need to be done, some that have occurred and some that have not. So it covers land security, water access, access to healthy soil and compost. So just for example, we have developed soil standards, but we don't as a city provide soil testing. So that so you see where some things we've done and some things have not been actualized yet. There are also pieces on leveraging local and regional resources to help growers and streamlining operations, regulations and staffing. In our two thousand and nineteen sustainability plan, which Ava gave you the sort of vision of, there's also a set of detailed strategies and actions that cover land use policies about identifying more city-owned land suitable for farming, protecting existing farms, helping people get to ownership, ensuring people can grow food in ways that are safe, environmentally sustainable and socially responsible. And that's about connecting people to resources and training, supporting social networks and improving our community engagement around agriculture. And finally, supporting growers to create financially viable urban agriculture. And that's about increasing demand, supporting aggregation and connecting people to more resources and incentives. And we've made a little bit of progress on some of these, some not so much. But none of them are in what you could call the advanced stages of making that vision come to life. Some of the barriers that we're seeing around expanding land access to farm. Limited available staff time and funding to support farms. Many people struggle with the permitting process and with leasing land from us. It can sometimes take a very long amount of time. And where there is land that is suitable for urban farming, the community is not always interested in seeing that use, which is obviously people's rights. But we want to make sure that people are aware of the benefits of farms and all the good things that are happening out there as a city and that we're training more sort of homegrown farmers who can grow in their own neighborhoods. And we're finding some conflicts between community and farms around maintenance, around the level of engagement. So we want to help address that as well. Some additional considerations for future policies. I wanted to draw attention to the Community Control of Land Report put out by the Black Yield Institute and the Farm Alliance of Baltimore last year. So more than a hundred people involved in this conversation and detail some major recommendations that apply to agriculture, but also potentially to other types of land uses. It's about how we dispose of vacant lands. You know, taking into account the sweat equity, reduced pressures on city infrastructure, et cetera, that farms provide a focus on collective or cooperative ownership and providing more support with some of the the capital costs that people find very hard to actualize. And finally, some other things that are on our mind. Our zoning and permitting regulations, as I mentioned, have limits on the percentage of the site that can be covered by structures. So they're not written with indoor growing in mind, but people are more and more interested in doing that. We have a vision based around equity, but we need specific policies and practices in place to realize that. There are immigrant and refugee communities in Baltimore that, some of which have a lot of agricultural knowledge and skill, but we're not really reaching at the present time. And finally, the cannabis-growing industry in the States has been in big economic boom for some people, but not here in Baltimore City. And that's what I've got. Hopefully I was under my ten-minute time limit. And see if I can figure out how to stop sharing my screen. Oh, that's good.
Abby, I totally appreciate you. Only like twenty seconds over, so we appreciate you. We're going to let you um, stop sharing the screen and then we're going to move on to the Department of Housing and Community Development as soon as that that portion is taken care of. And it looks like you're up. Department of Housing and Community Development.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I timed it so I shouldn't be over three or four minutes here. Good morning to yourself and members of the committee. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for D H C D. I'm joined here today by Eric Booker, our Deputy Commissioner for Code Enforcement and Emergency Operations. We stand by our bill report in support of the council's efforts to bolster urban farming in the city of Baltimore. We recognize that increased opportunities for urban agriculture may improve living conditions and food security in our neighborhoods and could play a significant role in attracting new residents, businesses and raising property values. D H C D currently serves Baltimore City's gardeners through the Adopt-A-Lot Program. Residents, businesses or neighborhood groups can apply for site control to steward city-owned vacant lots in their community. And an adopt-a-lot license holder can create community spaces that include community gardens, clean and green spaces and recreational areas. The maintenance of the adopted lots is the responsibility of the entity that enters into the adopt-a-lot agreement. While the program is not currently constructed to support urban farms, it does add significant value to the health and welfare of our communities. And we have been working closely, as Abby said, with the Office of Sustainability within the Department of Planning to identify parcels of city-owned land in neighborhoods where residents want to see more urban agriculture and are looking for the best ways to offer them for use through methods such as transfer of the site, disposition, leasing or adoption. D H C D also helps to provide water access for those sites. We understand that sometimes issues may arise related to the maintenance of community gardens and urban farms. When responding to complaints related to urban farms or community gardens, D H C D's Code Enforcement Inspectors carefully balance the need of urban gardeners and farmers along with the need to have these sites maintained in a clean, safe and sanitary condition that adheres to the requirements of our code. Additionally, in May of two thousand and twenty-one, Code Enforcement Inspectors and Attorneys completed an Audubon Society training on identifying beneficial plants when evaluating potential code violations. Should additional policies and practices for regulating urban farms be enacted, we would recommend ongoing education for Code Enforcement Inspectors and additional coordination and collaboration between agencies who oversee the various codes which may apply to an urban farm. D H C D stands by our bill report in support of this resolution. And myself and Deputy Commissioner Booker stand by to answer any questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Murdock. We're going to move on to the Department of Health.
Hello, everyone. It's Kelly Eastman, Deputy Chief of Staff of the Baltimore City Health Department. We stand by our bill report for Council Bill twenty-one zero zero six for R, which is favorable. And now I would like to turn it over to Sharon Colburn, who is the Director of Animal Control at the Health Department, to talk a little bit more about our role in urban farming.
Hi, good afternoon. Our role with farmers is if they decide to keep any type of animals such as a chicken, pig, rabbit, such as a chicken, pig, rabbits, or honeybees, that would require a permit through our office. That process includes paying a fee, with the exception of honeybees. Honeybees, there's no fee to get a permit. It includes an inspection to ensure there's proper housing, sanitation, confinement, proper water and food for the species, and a veterinary care management plan. The process is typically pretty easy. We have several community farms in the area that do have chickens and honeybees and rabbits. We have a great relationship with them. And we have even started in mending our regulations to include community farms having the ability to apply for species and quantities that are typically restricted, but they can apply for additional quantities or different types of animals, depending upon what role and what management plans they have in place. I'm happy to take any questions, but that would be our role with any farmers.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the Police Department.
Madam Chair, I'm Shannon Conway, Legislative Coordinator for BPD. I'm also joined by Lieutenant Colonel Brown. We stand by our report and we have no objection to the bill. We currently approach urban farms and community gardens on a case-by-case basis. We don't have a uniform policy, but rather our district commanders assess the risks of each individual area and work with community leaders to acknowledge any needs that are presented.
Thank you, Shannon. Thank you, Lieutenant Colonel Brown, for joining today. The Environmental Control Board.
Good morning. Rebecca Woods from the Environmental Control Board. The ECD stands by our report. We do work with other agencies, nonprofits, and community organizations on urban farms and gardens. And Natasha Neal is on the call as well, so she can elaborate a little bit more about what we do.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Natasha Neal, and I am the Community Liaison for the Be More Beautiful Program that operates out of the Environmental Control Board. We support our urban gardens and farms through our Care Lab program. This particular program aids. Last year, we had about eight groups. It's open to all urban farms throughout the city that are looking to maintain the cleanliness and beautification of their of their land through proper maintenance, traditionally through April through October. And that means mowing, removing weeds, harvesting things along those lines. We also support our urban gardeners with the opportunity to share some of their experience through our gardening workshops that take place virtually. We started last year. We held approximately six, both in-person and virtual, and we will continue to do that this year. We also support our urban gardens and farms through the usage of our Americor Vista. She comes out and offers in-person workshops with those that are interested in perhaps taking their Adopt a Lot licenses to the next level and transforming their vacant spaces into usable opportunities for the community to address through, excuse me, to address some of the food deserts that are currently in their particular neighborhoods.
Thank you both. We are going to move on to the City Administrator's Office.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the council. My name is Ariel Giles. I'm a Special Assistant in the Office of the City Administrator. I'll share some very brief remarks on behalf of this office. The office reviews this hearing and the relevant resolution favorably. This office supports the relevant agencies in their work in accommodating the city's existing urban farms and shares the goal of finding opportunities to nurture new ones. We know that urban farms and community gardens are an important part of our communities, and they can both increase economic opportunity and reduce food insecurity. They also contribute to the beautification of our city and can support the enhancement of health outcomes by providing access to healthy food for city residents. We'll continue to support the ECD, Planning, Sustainability, and all of the other agency partners that are here today that are part of the regulatory and enforcement regime with the goal of refining and maturing our policies and practices in order to bolster urban agriculture in the city of Baltimore. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for joining us. We're going to go to the City Solicitor at this time.
Hello, Madam Chair. This is Hillary Rulie from the City Solicitor's Office. We would support the resolution and approve it for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you, Ms. Rulie. We are now going to hear from Ulysses Archie from the Baltimore Gift Economy.
Hi, my name is Ulysses Archie from the Baltimore Gift Economy. Thank you for the space to allow us to, me to talk. A lot of the stuff that's going on in the urban farms as relates to the city is compartmentalized. There's different compartments that come out and address different issues. And sometimes when you have a complaint system that is really built on people complaining and responding, then you have this system that sometimes inadvertently catches other people up in that system. So that was one of the things that we have been kind of dealing with at a neighborhood level. Because when someone calls Animal Control, then someone from DWP comes out, someone from Parking Enforcement comes out, and it's a whole cascade of people that are coming out for an issue that they're, once they get on, you know, property, they decide, hmm, there's something going on here, and they write that issue up. And that has been our experience back in 2018 in dealing with animal control. They came out to my property, my house, and they saw the animals that were here. They weren't being mistreated or mishandled in any way. They took pictures. We never had an opportunity to talk. My kids were home alone, and they were very much affected by the animals leaving, because that's all they've ever known is these animals. So anyhow, we're trying to move forward because this also has a social, emotional learning attached to it, as well as the, also the animals being a an environmental benefit. Because my animals actually remediate the soil. They've been making soil, rabbits, pellets. I have rabbits. I have a pot-bellied pig right now named Mr. Porkington, and then I have chickens. And yeah, I would like to see some of the expansion of the space requirements. Because even at the largest requirement that they have, fifty chickens, if you process those chickens, which that's another issue, there's no processing in the city, and there's no place in the city that you can go to process. I am recommending and asking for them to build, you know, a processing center. Because a lot of these farms, maybe they need a sink. Maybe they need some big tumbler to process their vegetables or what have you. But there's no access. And for historically disenfranchised communities and people, brown, you know, brown people of culture, there is, there has not been access to those things. I drive two hours away to a slaughterhouse to get my chickens slaughtered. And even when I do that, I can't, do you hear a noise? Yes?
We can hear you fine. I can hear you okay.
My computer's doing. Even when I do that, I can't sell the chicken here in Baltimore because I had to go over a line to get it processed. And the nearest processing center here in Baltimore is in, something is there over my ear. The nearest processing center in Baltimore is in the, over near the lake. It's a big lake over there, but it's a little ways away. It's about three hours away from here. So it's better for me to go two hours away to do that. So while we support this bill and while we support the things that are going on here in the Baltimore area, we are not able to actually function. And we don't have, for the Adopt a Lots, we don't have a policy that will allow people that have been on that land for a very long time to move into ownership. And even if they move into ownership, they would have to move into also management and have some help with that, because we haven't had that type of opportunity here in Baltimore before for a lot of us that are starting these farms. I'm from North Carolina. My uncle has a farm. I've been on the farm most of my life. And so I've come here, and not everybody is aware of what the city is doing. So there's no communication or appropriate communication. There's also the Extension Office that we've worked closely with. And sometimes when we get our emails and stuff like that, we don't have, we can't click in because all these other things are going on. So I'm appreciative of the support behind this bill. We do have some work to do. I would like to see if we can also be a part of animal control in a way where there's farmers that, when we go out to farming locations, and we meet up with people to see, okay, you're in compliance. This is, this is a practice that isn't used everywhere, but it's a practice that, you know, people do. And so when the animal control agents come out, sometimes they're not even able to recognize the animals and what they're doing and what they're going through. And it's also some of the agencies in Baltimore City don't talk to each other, which is very problematic for us, because I went through the proper channels when we were in, back in 2018. And however, we were cut off in some way in our communication. So I, I've been doing this a little while. I've been doing this about ten years here in the other agencies and some of the groups that you guys mentioned. I do interface with them. They're great people. I love them. But I'm kind of an independent person that's doing this work, because I want to work in a way that it impacts our community. In our Baltimore Gift Economy, what we seek to do is to build talented capacity for long-term community growth. So that's what we do. And so some people agree with that. I'm a permaculture designer, and some people don't agree with that because of the different practices that we use. So if we could have an opportunity to have some due process when these folks come out to people's farms and places, that would be wonderful. And I do appreciate Councilperson Burnett for bringing this issue to there. Thank you, guys, very much. And I have a lot more questions and things that I will defer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you for being here and sharing your concerns on behalf of the farming community. At this time, we are going to move on to questions for committee members. And if you have a question, I'm just asking that you please signal, signal or use the raise hand function. And I'm going to go ahead and start a collective concern raised by numerous folks engaged in farming and community gardens. We actually just heard Ulysses Archie speak about it, is that our city agencies are working in silos when it comes to standards, regulations, and services dealing with urban farms and community gardens. For each city agency, can you walk us through or explain how you are working currently together? Or what progress have you made towards the common goal of successful farming in the city? Specifically, I want to know how are agencies coordinating with each other to streamline the process, the processes for existing and prospective farmers? And we can start with the Office of Sustainability.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cre. We have a monthly coordination meeting on sort of greening site issues. It started as housing and planning, just getting together to talk about specific sites. And we've expanded it over time to include folks from DPW and the Environmental Control Board and to talk about more overarching issues. That said, I would agree that there's still siloing and still more, you know, active work and conversation that needs to happen. As I said, we have a lot of big goals, and many of them still need to be realized. And there's a lot of processes that seem pretty straightforward on paper. Like, for example, permitting, that's act like it looks like it's that easy, but then people actually go to do it, and they get tripped up in lots of different ways. Because this use is relatively unfamiliar and uncommon, you know, as compared to other uses in the city. And so there's still a lack of knowledge. I could try to go into thoughts about how we deal with that, but just to straightforwardly address your question of what coordination is or isn't happening, that's what I have.
Going to go to the Health Department at this time. How are we coordinating and working with other agencies from your department, within your department?
So when it comes to farming with animals, we're the sole agency that deals with animals. We wouldn't necessarily coordinate with an agency like police or housing of that nature, because we're solely looking for, is there an appropriate structure for the animals? Does the animal have enough space? Does the animal have availability to water at all times, food at all times, proper confinement? Now, we do advise the applicant that if they are going to put up a structure, that they would need all the possible zoning permits that would be required for like a coop or fencing. And we do provide that information. So that would be a permit that would be required prior to us issuing a permit.
Ms. Murdock, how was, how was DHCD coordinating with other agencies around urban farming? What progress have you made, have you guys made recently?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Abby mentioned, that we do have the monthly coordinating meeting where we're helping to identify sites throughout the city and figure out the best ways to get those sites into the hands of potential urban farmers. We also coordinate with DPW around getting that access to water for the sites where that is an option. And I also mentioned earlier that our inspectors are also engaged in training, just educational work for their inspections to be able to identify different varieties of plants and things that may be used for cultivation. I don't know if Deputy Commissioner Booker has anything he wants to add on to that, but we're certainly open to continuing the conversation because I think, you know, what was said is correct. You know, this is an issue that spans across many different codes in the city of Baltimore and many different agencies. So I think moving forward, we're certainly willing to continue to be at the table and figure out ways to support one another.
And I have nothing to add.
Thank you, sir.
If I might add, Councilwoman, from the Environmental Control Board side, with our virtual workshop series, it's an opportunity for us to actually try to break down some of those silos. We have one that's coming up later this month on February 24th, where we've invited a lot of our city partners here to share some of the different opportunities that are available to them. One of the topics will be urban farming and gardening. And we do have DPW as well, as well as the Office of Sustainability participating in housing in that workshop as well.
I appreciate you adding that, Ms. Neal. And we'll make sure that we uplift the workshop on 2/24 as well. For, this is probably for Mr. Booker. We've had some issues, especially within my district. I know it's also been on other sides of the city regarding folks who are keeping, say, wildflowers and some other, some other items with inspectors coming through. So I guess my question is this. How are co-enforcement inspectors trained and educated on urban farms, community gardens, what their purpose is, their features, and the intricacies in order to just best support and work with communities and farmers? How are your inspectors trained and educated, or can you just walk us through some of that training?
Well, actually, Stephanie had mentioned that we had a, we had a training on urban farms and different types of plant life, because what some people call ornamental plants, we might call it high grass and weeds. So we had to get sensitized to what some people call ornamental plants, we might call it high grass and weeds. So we had to get sensitized to this environment. One thing that our system doesn't allow us to do, anybody that has an adopt a lot, if we are out on routine inspections and we see something that is in fact high grass or weeds or something of that nature, the system does not allow us to enter a work order for DPW to come and cure. So at that point, we reach over to Anika Middleton Asset Management folks for them to reach out to the adopt a lot person to make certain that that property is in fact maintained. So that's one stopgap that we have so that we don't request something that would in fact hurt somebody's farming opportunity.
Quick follow as a quick follow up, are all of your inspectors, I know you have interior inspectors or exterior inspectors, the ones who are going out responding to high grass and weeds, are all of those inspectors, have they been through a training on how to identify the difference between high grass and weeds and say, wildflies or ornamental flowers that are supposed to support community gardens or even my garden? Are they trained on that or all of them trained on that?
But they have been trained on that and it has become a part of our training process since we had the initial training. Because that's something that we're going to continue to run into. So all of the inspectors are trained with regard to that. And thank you for that question.
Thank you. We're going to move to Councilmember Burnett. Councilmember Burnett, I see a few additional hands, so we're going to limit ourselves this first round to two questions.
Got it. Thank you, Madam Chair. The first question I had is for Abby. You mentioned in the in your presentation that there were some outstanding things that revisions that needed to be made to the current, I guess, guidance or or I'm sorry, I'm trying to pull up your slides here, the Urban Agricultural Plan from two thousand thirteen. Can you speak to what are the, I guess, challenges that your agency is facing in implementing the plan as written? And as a second question, Madam Chair, what are some of the outstanding parts of the plan that still need to be revised and what's the timeline for that moving forward?
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey. Yeah, in terms of updating the act plan, I'll start with that. I don't think that any thing that's in it is like wrong as is or needs to be changed. Some things we could, you know, check off. But it's more adding in some of those features that I talked about. And to be frank, we don't have a timeline at the present for, you know, when we would do that. We just know that there's more areas that we want to address. In terms of some of the barriers to implementing all the recommendations in the plan, it can be difficult working across agencies. So there are parts of the recommendations that touch housing and community development in terms of automatic notification of the adopt a lot license renewal or that touch Department of Public Works in terms of developing options for winter water access or improving the payment process for the water access program. And some things that there's a number of city agencies that potentially could support it, like increase availability of equipment, you know, so DGS, DPW Recreation Parks may have access to trucks. But saying, okay, you, you know, twice a year are going to provide certain number of trucks to help out the farms and gardeners in the city. You know, saying you are actually going to do that is a different story. So sorry, I know that our time here is valuable. I think it may be helpful to have, you know, administration or council direction rather than having one agency, you know, and different people in different agencies trying to forward the agenda in different ways at different times to bring us all back together around not these sort of in the weeds, so to speak, site issues, but around this bigger policy agenda. And, you know, parcelling out who's going to work on what and when we're going to check back in with it. I think something like that could be really helpful.
Okay, those are my two questions for this round, Madam Chair. I do have more on the next round.
Okay, Councilman Dorsey, did you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The cities there's a there's a there's an agricultural property tax credit that we have. And my recollection, and I was having a hard time trying to find it just now, my recollection is that it requires that the entirety of the tax credited property be used for agricultural production. And I wondered if we've ever had any conversation or entertained the idea of potentially prorating to allow for partial use for agricultural production because we do have Andreas Spiliadis is a good example, somebody who uses every square inch of the exterior of his property for agricultural production as a partial means of kind of economic, you know, his household income. Yet he's not eligible for this tax credit because it's not the sole use of his property, which is also his dwelling. Have we ever, is there any room? And I guess, is it legal? And have we had any conversation about the potential to prorate? You know, if we were to change that law?
Yeah, Councilman, you're correct. I just put into the chat a link to where people can find details on the tax credit. It does take an expansive view of what urban agriculture is. You do have to be hitting that certain value of plants and animals that you're growing, but it can include environmental mitigation, community development activities, economic development activities, but it cannot include a home, like in the case that you described, or an unrelated business. We did, when we were putting the tax credit together, have some conversations with the Department of Finance about if it would be possible to do something along the lines of what you're saying. And the thought at the time was it'd be so difficult to figure out and open to abuse. And so we didn't pursue that further, but there has been very little uptake at this point of the credit. So I think it could be worth revisiting that.
Do we have a report or should I ask somebody, in particular, the Finance Department or the Controller's Office on actual utilization of that credit?
Yeah, I can send that over. It's just three parcels that have it currently, so it's a shortlist. But yeah, I can provide that to the council.
And are those is there do you have a sense that the reason that there might be such low utilization is that many of the parcels that would be eligible are already parcels that are fully tax exempt because they're owned by nonprofit entities in the first place?
I think it's a mix of, like you say, a lot of people aren't paying property taxes to begin with. And then for those who are or would be, if they started a new site that has to be wholly used, you know, for agriculture thing is a real barrier. Subdividing a property is not easy and not always legal, depending on how, you know, it's shaped. And the aspect that you have to keep the property in agricultural use for the full five-year term of the credit or like repay the back credit is another piece of the puzzle there that I think may be making it less attractive for people. But I think they're maybe not even getting to the point of finding it relevant to them in the first place.
Thanks. I'm really interested in this idea of potentially prorating on the existing property, not requiring subdivision, you know, and that is something that ESTAT does. If a property, for example, is owned by a religious entity that is tax exempt, but there is some for profit use of some portion of the premise, ESTAT will, you know, will tax on the non-exempt portion of the property on a prorated basis. So I'm really interested in the potential for us to to do that with this credit. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey. Okay, I see Councilman Torrance, your hand is no longer up. Are there any other members before I asked my last questions? Are there any other members who have any additional questions? Please use the raise hand function or signal if you have any questions. And seeing and hearing none, I'm going to move on to a question that should have been my first question. Where can someone go whose interests, say, they are just starting in urban agricultural business in the city, where can they go for guidance and resources on meeting the city's regulatory requirements? What's the first step that they take?
Yeah, so I often have those conversations with people and walk them through, you know, a lot of the information that was just provided. The University of Maryland Extension Service also has a Baltimore City Urban Agriculture Person, Neath Little, who was on the chat earlier and might still be here, but they're an amazing resource. Yes, I see Neath there. And sorry, my mind's going a little bit blank at the moment, but there's other folks who support this work. Kim Knox in the Department of Planning, our Baltimore Green Network Coordinator is very helpful in helping people figure out what they need to do. But yeah, I would say that our office is often the first point of contact for people and we try to put as much information as we can, you know, out on the web on that link that I provided and participate in workshops. We'll be there at the the greening one oh one workshop that the Environmental Control Board is holding next month. Yeah.
Okay, so Abby, I'm going to go with they start with the Office of Sustainability. That's what I got from your information. You did mention the Extension Program. How can you talk to us about how city agencies collaborate with external organizations like UMD Extension and the Farm Alliance of Baltimore to become thoroughly educated and to come to consensus on best practices? What does that collaboration look like?
Yeah, at times we've had a sort of working group of stakeholders in the agricultural scene where we've come together, you know, as we were putting together the agricultural plan, you know, in the couple of years after that. And then as we were working on the two thousand nineteen sustainability plan, we've convened those folks to sort of talk through what they're seeing, what's working and not working, what advice we should be giving people. And to be frank, we haven't done that in the last couple of years, and that would be a good thing to renew. In terms of working with the Farm Alliance, I mentioned that we are currently supporting them in they've got a right of entry now and we're working on a lease for land in Farring Bay Brook Park. So we're in regular conversations with them and recreation parks about that. And we had for a while sort of weekly phone call during the beginning of the pandemic about how we could support urban farmers. But aside from those things, we're not in regular communication. We don't have like a standing call or monthly meeting with those you know, outside of the city stakeholders at this time.
Okay, I have one last question. I'm going to turn this over to Councilwoman Burnett. Do any of our cities, excuse me, do any of our city agencies help those engaged in urban farming and community gardens in the grant writing process?
I have written letters of support for farmers before in their grant seeking options. And when we see something, we'll sort of send it out there to the folks we're aware of in this field. But no, we haven't often like partnered on a grant together with a farmer.
And we don't offer, we don't offer any resources around helping them with grant writing or obtain an additional funding on the city side?
There actually is going to be a workshop that Kim Knox, who I mentioned, the Baltimore Green Network Coordinator in the Department of Planning, is going to be holding in March on Grant Writing one oh one with a panel of funders. It's not specific to agriculture per se. It's a broader, you know, look at greening. So it could be you know, rain gardens, beautification gardens, other sorts of community-based greening projects. And we've done small workshops like that before, but we don't offer, you know, sort of regular or ongoing counseling around that.
Got it. Council, thank you, Abby. Councilman Burnett, at this time, you have as many questions as you need, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this question, I guess, would be more of an information request because I don't think you would have it in front of them, but Mr. Booker, do you I guess, how many complaints does your agency receive on an annual basis related to urban farms, community gardens? And I guess anecdotally, without having, you know, a number in front of you, what are what would be the chief complaints, I guess, two or three that continue to emerge?
Okay, Councilman, it wouldn't break out as a complaint for urban farms. It would usually just fall into high grass and weeds category because something is not being kept. We respond to over fifty thousand service requests a year, most of them for sanitation in nature, which is sanitation to include high grass and weeds. I would venture to say that most, that's about thirty some thousand service requests a year in that bucket. So they don't break out as, you know, an urban farm complaint. It would just fall into that broader category.
Okay, well, I would email you offline to try and see if we can get data a different way that could potentially help that. I do understand that. The other question I had, and this wasn't directed to you specifically, but I guess for all of the agencies present, are there incentives for starting or any form of urban agriculture, particularly in communities located in healthy food priority areas and lack access to fresh foods? I guess, if we could speak just broadly to targeted incentives that may be available in those areas that may not have a grocery store and folks are relying on corner stores primarily.
So I mentioned at the beginning of my presentation before that some healthy food priority area funds have been used to support urban agriculture. My understanding is that that's been for existing farms to sort of help them meet their infrastructure needs and keep going and not so much for starting up new farms. In prior years, we had some community development block grant money that we were able to make small improvements to help farms get started up through our land leasing program in terms of putting in water lines, taking up some concrete, fixing the roof of a garage, little things like that. We don't have that funding anymore. So the Farm Alliance, the Black Butterfly Urban Farmer Training Program that they're putting together, that's going to be cited at that new farm incubator site. I believe that coming out of that, participants will have a little bit of support. There's also a Beginning Farmer Training Program that's statewide that does a similar thing where trainees get, you know, a small pot of funding, I think a couple of thousand dollars after they graduate to get started. But the needs are so much greater than that. So there is a grant through Marbidco, the Maryland Agricultural Resource Development Bureau. I'm not saying their full name correctly, but it's a matching grant to pair with a loan. So we can direct people to that. But there is very much a need for more support for startup costs. And I would love to see us be able to provide that. And I would love to see us be able to provide that.
And I guess, oh, I'm sorry, just a quick follow-up. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sorry. Uh, just a quick follow-up on, on that. What are the methods for like promotion for these workshops? And I guess, could you start distributing them to the council if you haven't already so that we can assist in that as, when they're, when they're upcoming? This is a, a request.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, we have a, an monthly sustainability newsletter that we send out and periodically we'll reach out to, um, sort of subgroups of people within that. I've got like a list of urban farmers that I email about things, but I don't think I've sent these out to them. So absolutely, uh, we can send offerings that we have to the council to help publicize in future. That would be great.
Awesome, thank you. Sorry, I keep interrupting you, I'm sorry.
Uh, I was just gonna tack on that. I'm not aware of any off the top of my head, but I can check in with our Community Catalyst Grant Program and our Community Development Block Grant Program to see if any of the funds that have been issued previously have been used in that way.
And just to add to that as well, Councilman Burnett, with our care lot funding, it's completely flexible. So if there happens to be a adopt a lot that is just, let's say, clean and green and the neighborhood has a desire to perhaps pivot and begin to do some agriculture, I mean, urban farming and gardens, those funds can be used specifically for that. They can bank it and use towards some of the startup costs. So the flexibility with that helps aid with some of those objectives.
Thank you. I don't know if there's anyone, anyone other, other agencies? Okay, sounds like it. Okay. My, my other question would be directed to the Police Department. We've become aware of instances in which the police have been called regarding issues with urban, urban agriculture. Can you, um, I guess, provide us any kind of situations in which the police would be or would respond to complaints related to urban agriculture? It kind of caught me off guard when I learned of, of at least one instance. But I guess if you could speak broadly to the, the role of the Police Department and how you may coordinate with the other agencies on this call to address concerns that may have been brought to the department itself.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Councilman, for that question. So I can tell you, um, with my time being the commander in the Southern District, Curl Park, we do have, uh, you know, an urban farm there, of course, in, in Curtis Bay as well. But most of my concerns and issues that arise from our farmers were from Curl Park. We would have some of our homeless population that were visiting kind of disturb some of the farm. Um, and then we would also have some of our other, um, community that would come and kind of sort of, uh, try to use the space for, uh, drug usage. So what we would do in turn is I would send my neighborhood coordination officers there, right? First, we need to make a relationship, build that partnership so that we can have real-time communication when these things were happening and not have a lag over of time like for response. But what we wind up doing is using that lens for some prevention, you know, provide some, some safety tips and things like that. But in that process, you know, we build out some, some patrols there at the comfortability of the farmers. Because of course, what we don't want to do is have a heavy presence there. If the goal is that, as we're talking about, you know, providing nourishment and, and, and supplementing some of our, um, food sources as well as, you know, just being a staple stone to the community. So, um, at those, at the comfort of, of those farmers is when we will come. They would tell us kind of the time that they knew that those individuals would be there to be disruptive, you know, in that process, and that will be with the time that we would have a response. Now, what we did wind up doing is building a, a really great relationship and being able to share to the community that those farms were there. And, you know, of course, use it as a partnership for our young people for some educational values and activities too.
Got it. Thank you. Um, that, that was my last question, Madam Chair. I know we have a lot of folks that wanted to testify. So I'll stop there.
Okay, thank you. I just want to double check and see if we had any other committee members. I'm not showing any. So we are going to move into public testimony at this time. And Matthew Peterson, he's going to take over right now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As a reminder for everyone joining us from the public, please use the raise hand function to let us know if you would like to testify. If you have joined by computer, callers don't have that option. So each caller will be unmuted in turn during the public testimony portion. If you're unable to find the raise hand function, you can also use the chat function to let me know. Uh, we're gonna start with Jody Morris.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, my name's Jody Morris. I'm an experienced chicken farmer on a small scale. I grow chickens organically and sustainably. I can do probably about 200 birds in an acre per year. And my main interest, I'm a resident of Baltimore and I also have a small business selling chicken meat in farmers markets here in town. And, um, one more thing, I'm the Committee Chair of the Earth Care Committee at Govens Presbyterian Church. We've recently applied together with Chincapin, with Wilson Park and Woodborne McCain, for a large grant would probably end up being 150 to $200,000 to change, well, to retain water on site, uh, rainwater on site. So it includes all kinds of different projects and working with these groups to, to accomplish that in the next couple of years. So my main interest personally in chicken with regard to chicken farming is that I, I'd like to work in a community with the community to, um, to add chicken meat to a neighborhood food economy. There are a lot of vegetables out there and that's wonderful and the more, the better. But a high protein addition to that diet, I think, is incredibly valuable. And so I have two requests. One would be that the, it sounds like Sharon Colburn's organization is working hard on permitting, uh, animal permitting matters and I appreciate that. I'd like to see, um, chicken meat processing included in that work. And also I would like to see the city support small-scale processing plant, plants like onsite, urban farm, animal processing buildings. This is totally doable. It's not impossible by any means. I realize it's challenging. But if we're talking about local food economies, and I know we are, it's something everyone's interested in. Meat is a very important and valuable addition to a local food economy. And so that's why I'm here and that's everything I, I, I had to add. I'm just, I, I wanted to contribute. I just want to say one more thing, you know, I'm looking for land. And I hear a lot of testimony today about organizations in the city that are working on that and I am thankful for you. And, uh, and I'm gonna search these resources out all the more. I've already applied with the Office of Sustainability for a, um, land lease. And I'll do that again with the new program they're working on. But I don't have money to buy property. So I'm dependent on the city for accomplishing this goal and appreciate everything you guys are doing to help me get there.
Thank you. Next, we have Charles DeBarber.
Hello, how are y'all doing today? Uh, can y'all hear me?
We can.
Excellent. Howdy. My name is Charles DeBarber. I'm the animal caretaker over at Filbert Street Garden. We've been around for a decade and we began as a way to tackle local food deserts. Uh, our model has expanded based on community needs, all the way to even providing community wifi, mostly because green spaces and data deserts are co-located. We're considered the most animal husbandry friendly and focused gardens in the city as we have chickens, turkeys, ducks, goats, sheep, and very famously our honeybees because primarily I'm a beekeeper. We have the largest community garden bee yard in Maryland and the largest one in the city, right down there in Curtis Bay. We've been providing free education to locals on what habitats for these animals should look like. And it worked, uh, very closely to help people understand the exotics reg from animal control. Unfortunately, a lot of that knowledge on how to keep these animals left 30 years ago. Uh, until 2013, when the new reg came out, the A-Rabbers were the only ones really in the city with real animal husbandry knowledge left. We built some great relationships with animal control, with barks and with our sister gardens that keep animals. And a third of our animals are rescued at Filbert Street Garden. Challenges for animal husbandry in the city, you know, in 2013, changes to the gray, to the reg really opened the door for responsible and sensible animal husbandry. It permitted miniature goats, it eliminated fees related to bee permits, it made some exceptions for chicken numbers for community gardens, uh, within the reg. Unfortunately, that knowledge for those animals has kind of been long gone and we're really just trying to reclaim it. Educational nonprofits have, like ours, unfortunately, have skirted the regs and have worked with Baltimore Animal Control. The ducks, turkeys and sheep at my garden, as well as others throughout the city, they're technically not supposed to be there. We've had a pretty laissez-faire, uh, policy with, uh, the city so long as we had a plan and things were taken care of. We've been working with the Department of Health through the Director of Animal Control on a waiver system for nonprofit community gardens that have an educational purpose. That's moving forward to public comment, to my understanding. It was mentioned by Ms. Sharon. Our hope is that it'll allow us to have our sheep, our ducks and our turkeys legitimately. This process requires a thumbs up from the, um, Maryland University Farming Extension and a solid plan based on the care that's needed for these animals, for their habitats, their containment, preventing cruelty toward them and preventing any issues that affect human health or become a nuisance. We're actually still figuring out urban animal husbandry in the city. Uh, I'm proud to say that during 2020 and 2021, we, uh, provided close to 8,000 eggs for the community. In fact, it became a joke in Southern Baltimore, the only place you could get eggs was, uh, from Filbert Street Garden during the, uh, harder times of the pandemic. I feel like we're kind of building the plane as we fly it. We do have a good relationship with local police in Southern Baltimore. Couple of months ago, they humorously brought us a hen that wasn't ours that they found abandoned in a park in Brooklyn. We had asked them what the hen was arrested for. Uh, on a more serious note, we've also worked, um, with some of our local community police to eliminate drug use in our back alley and the amount of sex work that was going on back there, unfortunately. They got streetlights set up back there through a little bit of pushing and it really mitigated. Uh, I know the comp, the Baltimore Compost Collective was having issues with work, uh, with their youth workers digging, um, into our piles back there and coming up with syringes. I've kind of narrowed down the two other issues that a lot of us community gardens are facing. And frankly, urban farms as well. Land sovereignty is a large issue for us. For those that know us, we had our own issue two years ago where, um,
DeBarber, um, we are so grateful and thankful for your testimony. Would you be able to close out at this time? Thank you.
I'm so sorry, but, uh, land sovereignty are key issues for us and having a clear road for getting this stuff. And I'll finish it off by saying that, uh, you know, I echo Mr. Archie's sentiment on how difficult it can be to navigate, um, with where sustainability, green spaces and animal control overlap. And Ms. McCray, you hit it very well with the question of, you know, what guidance is there for folks? If there could be like a guide or a simple website that was like, hey, you want to have an urban garden? These are the different groups you have to talk to based on these particular concerns. And having just a quick page of, you know, okay, here's the exotic animal regs. Here's the adopt a lot. Here is a link that shows you all the local adopt lots available right now. That would really ease the process for everybody. Because you really have to either call somebody like Farm Alliance or you have to communicate with another urban farm and consult, and consult with them to even really figure out, um, what to do. So I, pardon me, I'm very verbose. Uh, that's all I got to say.
Thank you for your testimony.
Next, we have Cynthia Gross.
Hi, good morning. Um, listening to everything, uh, I just have a lot to say. This bill is very expensive, expansive when you talk about, uh, gardening and farming. But really quickly, my name is Cynthia Gross. I currently serve as the President of the Care Community Association and we manage over 60 lots through an adopt a lot program through the city. But I just want to focus on two things I haven't heard. One, I did hear from Charles about, uh, A-Rabbers. As a native Baltimorean, I'm kind of lost as to where the A-Rabbers stand. That is history in these Balt, in Baltimore all. And I want to know where in this process are we beefing up or supporting that nostalgic, uh, very needed source of, uh, economic stability and community building, uh, that was around the A-Rabbers? And if that's anywhere in this process, in this bill? The other thing is the adopt a lot, uh, process. We've had our lots before the adopt a lot process even came into existence and it has changed over the years. And I think the recent most adopt a lot license I have says that is for one year. And I've worked with housing and they've gotten better because I would submit an adopt a lot license in January and may not get it back until May, but it's dated January. So I'm up again in a few months having to resubmit that adopt a lot license. And just recently, when I talked to Nikki and them, I said, well, it used to be two years. So they extended it to two years. I'm not quite clear, when we go through the adopt a lot license process and people start changing things at housing, they add, they delete verbiage, is that gone through a community review? Are communities who are a part of that process involved in helping to streamline or change the verbiage or the way it works? Because if I'm not catching things and saying, hey, why did this change? No one's really telling me. So, um, you know, and it takes a level of detail to try to go through these things all the time with different city agencies to say, wait a minute, why did you change this? And how's this going to impact me? And how does this work with your process that takes four months to get it back to me in the first place? So I think, um, I'd just like to see a lot more of coordination between city agencies with people who are actually in the process or actually doing the work. Because what I think Charles and Ulysses kind of stated here is that, the people on the ground in the communities are really kind of the experts and flying, like Charles said, the plane while we're trying to make it. And the city comes in with rules and regulations, which they should, but I, I need to see a little bit more coordination between the city and the people who are actually doing to try to help make this a coordinated effort. But I support open spaces, urban farming, gardening, the whole nine. I think it's needed in the city, particularly when we are faced with epidemics and people can't go but so far outside their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Murdock, can we just have someone reach out to Ms. Gross about her question specifically regarding adopt the lot program? Thank you.
Sure thing.
Next, we have Crystal Foreman.
Happy greetings, everyone. Um,
Sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sorry, I accidentally clicked your mute button, but you're.
Happy greetings, Madam Chair, members of the Health, Environment and Technology Committee. I am Crystal Foreman. I'm the owner and educator of Holistic Wellness and Health. I'm also on the Board of Advisors as the community liaison for the Baltimore City Master Gardeners. Additionally, I work with Chelpe Park as a. Additionally, I work with Chevy Carpet as a produce safety educator for farms. And as a health educator and chef of Holistic Wellness and Health, I work in partnership with Baltimore City Farms, as well as the Farm Alliance of Baltimore. I teach people how to use the local produce to create easy meals. And I've also been a volunteer farmer since 2015. I'm a certified permaculture designer. And as a produce safety educator, I work specifically with Baltimore City Farms to create food safety plans. I'm, I'm not going to go, a lot of people have said a lot of things that, um, I would bring up about food security and environmental, um, protection for the land as well, um, and food sovereignty is very important. I would like to bring up that I do work with a lot of communities throughout Baltimore City. And the residents are grateful for access to fresh, sustainable produce. And we need to create more opportunities for urban farms so that they can have a positive impact on more communities. The youth and seniors enjoy learning about planting, harvesting, preserving, and cooking food. And the youth enjoy sharing their knowledge with their families as well. A lot of the youth at the farms are also learning how to make a living in food and specifically urban agriculture. Um, let's see, so I did submit a written report or, um, testimony, but I'm just going to read just to my last paragraph. I would ask the city, um, to give land and funding to farms so that we can continue to have thriving urban agriculture that other cities will want to model. The city should make sure that the stewards of the land are truly invested in the well-being of the community. The urban agriculture has the ability to increase job security and entrepreneurship. Local agriculture will also help reduce our negative impact on environment by providing oxygen-giving plants, building carbon-rich soil, and reducing our carbon footprint. So with that being said, I request a favorable report on City Council Bill 21 dash 0064R. Thank you very much.
Uh, it looks like we have one caller in the meeting. I will unmute you now. If you have any testimony, please go ahead. Caller, you're unmuted. No response. And Madam Chair, I think that is the last of the public testimony.
Okay, that's going to conclude public testimony. Um, we thank you all for your testimony as well as the written testimony that was submitted as well. Um, we are going to go ahead and go ahead and vote for the resolution. Is there a motion to recommend the resolution favorably?
Two.
Second.
Okay, I believe that that was, the motion was made by Councilman Dorsey, was the second by Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Okay, so McCray is a yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Conway?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Um, Councilwoman Porter is not with us, so that's going to be an absent vote. Um, Councilman Torrance?
Yes.
Schleifer?
Yes.
Okay, the motion has passed six to zero. The committee will report the resolution at the next City Council meeting. I thank everyone for joining us, um, this morning and into the afternoon for both hearings. Um, this hearing is now adjourned.